Call tonight's meeting of County Council ordered. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilwoman Law, the optional prayer, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. The powerful and meek, men and women, old and young together, all people, we all strive to be our best. We do not want to be negligent in the constructive use of the marvelous resources that have been given to us. Lord, we do not want to allow our gifts and talents to go dormant. We hope to stimulate our minds and challenge and uplift others. We pray for guidance in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Roll call, Mr. Smith.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Here.
Mrs. Fatiga?
Here.
Dr. Faust?
Here.
Mr. Leon?
Here.
Mrs. Law?
Here.
Mr. Horton?
Here.
Chairman Brenneman?
Here.
Hearing of the public, those who called ahead will have five minutes; those who did not will have three. We have two folks that called ahead. First is Carolyn Gaither. Gaeder? Gaither? Gaither, okay. You'll have five minutes.
My name is Carolyn Gaither. I live in the city of Erie. I have all my life. And I'm here to ask some questions about the criminal history, of course, which was a big issue at the last meeting. It seems like most of the discussion on this, mostly information on this thing was hidden. When I went back to look through, I saw it on the news, in the newspaper, actually, and with the landlord information. I went back and looked, and your agenda had a very vague reference in it to what the ordinance was about. You had to go back to the finance summary agenda from the 31st in order to find out what the general crunch-down topic part of it was. From there, you go back to the finance summary, or the finance agenda for the 31st, and there was 35 or 40 pages of a Word file with track changes turned on in there, and read through what was being struck out, what was being added in on it. You get into there, and you start looking, and it was dated February 9th. So this has been going for quite some time. There was a reference to criminal history, and it said definite, it basically said that there was no definition for that yet. So going into your meeting to vote on this, there was nothing out there for the public to know anything about criminal history. I'll be honest with you, gender identity, I don't care. Source of income, I do care. I'm a landlord. I have one property with three units. I have to have income coming in in order to provide a place for my plot of my tenants to live. Regarding, the biggest thing to me, though, is the criminal history. Section 8 and public housing require criminal background checks. They can lock you out. They can tell you no. And that's for the whole, everybody in there. And you're telling me that I can't do that? That it's not my right as a landlord to do the same type of criminal background check and for me to decide? Because I don't have my own campus safety type of people on the streets, for me not to be able to decide what to do at that stage? So is somebody else going to go out there and keep an eye on these people for me? Or do I have to just monitor my residents, my tenants' places, and worry that I'm going to be, that one of my tenants is going to get hurt because I didn't check deeply enough into these people's backgrounds? So, I know there's, I know Ms. Law is a landlord, right? Is anybody else a landlord? Do you live around a lot of rentals? I mean, I live over, I live over five blocks from here, six blocks. I have rentals everywhere around me. I monitor who's in the buildings, who's renting in the houses that are next door to me. And you're trying to take away my right to control who's going to be living next to my tenants. And honestly, I don't think that's fair. The other part, the other issue that I have is if there's no required monitoring of the people in the protected classes, then there's nothing that the landlord or the public can do. I'm just finishing up, in fact, not yet finished. I have a protected class tenant, or I had one, in one of my apartments. He'd been my tenant for about 20 years. He was mentally challenged and had people monitoring him and everything like that. He deteriorated into hoarding, and he had a nice infestation of bedbugs, which his providers, his care providers, they had washed their hands of the guy because he wasn't following orders. So turn around, I have to clean the place, and now my tenants are leaving as soon as they can because of the bedbug infestation. I'm out $3,000. If you want to lose some weight, throw on Tyvek for 40 or 50 hours and wander around in a Tyvek suit, cleaning because nobody in the family would take what he had ordered. So I arranged to get all that gone. $900 for trash removal. I didn't even count in the people that helped me with this. So that was one of the protected classes that left me with nothing. Nothing at all, except the email from the attorney today telling me that I was not up to speed on my duties as a landlord protecting my other tenants. So I just need to know, why was this hidden? And how are you going to protect me? Will you guys pay for this when it happens the next time through?
Thank you, Ms. Gaither. Your time has expired. I will point out that Mr. Joe Guglia is in the audience. Joe, can you raise your hand? If you have any questions, you can either during the meeting go out and talk about it in the hall, or we can wait till after the meeting, and you can get a lot of your questions answered directly from him, particularly on the criminal background portion of that as well. I do want to apologize about your difficulty in navigating our website for agenda items and minutes and stuff. I do believe that we need to upgrade that as well. But for some, we did have a, just for everybody else's awareness, we did have a public hearing at 5:45 today on the proposed HRC ordinance. It's not on our agenda to vote. At the last council meeting, that was a first reading, so it wouldn't have been up for a vote anyways at that point. And we have had a meeting with some property owners and other groups to discuss possible changes to the ordinance. So there's still time to, please talk to Joe, and you can also submit to our office your concerns and potential changes you would like to see in the proposed ordinance. There's still plenty of time for us to discuss and review those before council actually does take it up for vote. Next on, from a hearing from the public, is Mr. Giles. You'll have five minutes.
I left my watch in the car. I thought you'd be any kind of opportunity to borrow your watch. All right, thank you. It's always a pleasure to appear before you all. I have four things, and I'm going to try and squeeze them in quickly. Number one is Dr. William Garvey, as everyone is aware, passed away. He was the first Director of Administration for the county of Erie when it became a home world county. His funeral was held at St. Patrick's, which is my church, and the Knights and Ladies of St. Patrick, were the honor guard, including Mary Daly, Brady Lewis, Tim Healy, Liz Allen, and myself. The ceremony was always as impressive. I'm Senior Kriegel, the pastor of St. Patrick's, did the sermon, and it was, it was very moving. Church of the pack. Part of that is the detailing of what, if I remember well now, what Senior Kriegel said, is that we need to remember and look and see the good that people did. Well, in the handout at the funeral, I mean, itself, when you came in, there's a summary. I'd rather, with your indulgence and your permission, include that with my comments in honor of Dr. Garvey. Number two, as everyone is aware, and I am talking fast, so you believe it or not, the Almshaus Cemetery was on Monday, September 11th, and I just want to point out a couple things that made it unique. One, remember that this is done all by voluntary decisions. Everybody who's there are all the people from different churches and denominations are all doing this as a gratuity. There were 25 people. The largest number we have seen at the Almshaus Cemetery in which we have committed the remains of those 25 people. What made it really unique is that one of those 25, in the first years of 1992, was a six-month-old baby boy who remained, so to speak, on the steps of the county courthouse, whose parents were not playing him. Now, that's the first we've seen someone that young. Another thing that we have never seen since 1992 is somebody coming from the family, because obviously these people are family, friends, et cetera. And the people who came to me right before the ceremony saying, "Oh, that's our brother who you are committing here." And we weren't, we haven't been in touch with him for like 30, 40 years. And it was the manager of Richard Arms, a couple blocks from here, who, when he died, she was going through his stuff and putting things in order, and saw this letter from somebody from Tanya Nesta. And she took the time to track them down, and they were there for the ceremony. They were, they were there to participate, they had been out of touch for like 40 years. So that it always is, remind everyone here that everyone who participates in the Almshaus Cemetery mental service is doing it by way of volunteers. I have noted that the people who have begun applying in all of that, and the task, has grown now to at least, I would say, 24 people are there, just that piece of it, and so the musician, church leader, etc. And again, it was always very important. Number two, on September 6th, none of these things I don't think you will find are casual or silly, but on September 6th, Erie County Suicide Prevention Program was held at the Ambassador up on the Hill, and there were approximately 500 people there for that program. And I think that you really should, I'm going to ask you to give a round of applause to what, our own or your own, Dene Breder, whose presentation was a mother's perspective before, during, and after an attempt. And Dene did an outstanding, not just a good job, she did an outstanding job. She had a difficult subject to deal with. She put it together very well, and about, I'd say about an hour and a half. And it was intimate, it was close, it was personal, and it was big in terms of issue. And she brought a lot of advice to a lot of people, and I think that everyone here should give Dene a round of applause.
I think you should, I think you're right.
Then lastly, on Friday, September 15th, this is again, in Exeter County, GCT has its annual dinner, and they hand out various awards. But one of the awards went to the predecessor for Doug Smith, Flo Faresio, for our, he was the county clerk, the chief clerk, I like to say, if you see that, the chief clerk for the county for 20 years, and he's going through a difficult battle with cancer. And they gave him an award toward the end for civic something, and it was impressive. The whole audience, everyone gets their different awards, and his award got everyone on their feet, and it was real impressive. It's good to see Flo, and he is holding his oath, and he is one of us. So that's about as quick as I've ever done.
You made it.
Should we check the record?
All right, thank you, Mr. Giles.
Thank you, Mr. Giles.
Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Anyone else from the public wish to speak? You'll have three minutes to speak.
I'll make it a fast three minutes, I promise.
Name, please, for the record.
Joe Guglia, in an informal capacity on the basis of the Erie County Unrelations Commission to him. I applaud council, first of all, for having a public hearing. That's democracy in action. And I was thinking of two things that were said at the public hearing that were important. One was echoed by Councilman Faust, as well as Councilman Horton. How long is enough? Is it 20 years? Is it 30 years? Is it 40 years? Is it 50? How long is enough for somebody who may have had a prior conviction 30, 40 years ago, 40 or 50 years ago, to be denied housing or be denied employment on the basis of that conviction? Is there some arbitrary number out there? You know, when the commission arrived at the 10 years, that was on the basis of what happened in Philadelphia, their ordinance. I'd note also to you, I'd echo what Councilman Faust also said, too. There has to be some workable model out there. There has to be some workable model. If there's not this model, then what? And I think through the meshing of all these ideas out there, through the landlords, through those concerned by the, either the NAACP or GEAE or whomever, through all these meshing of ideas, we're going to come up with a good workable model. If it's not this model, we're not going to come up with one. But the biggest thing is, our intent is to educate the public and also to help those people that can't find housing and that can't find employment because of a prior conviction. The intent isn't for somebody not, for a landlord or a Florida not to use a prior arrest record or a prior conviction within the last 10 years. That isn't the intent. The intent is for those crimes that have been long ago and not crimes of violence and not crimes of a sexual nature. I didn't really hear too much pushback on gender identity or source of income, but to the extent there is any, I just note that various other municipalities, as well as government agencies, have enacted the same type of language on the basis of source of income or gender identity. And with that, I rest.
Thank you, Mr. Guglia. Although we're not in court, so you don't need to rest your case, but I'm sure there's still some input you would like from the public as well. Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Hearing done, we'll move on. Do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the regular meeting minutes of September 5th.
Moved by Dr. Faust, seconded by Mr. Leon. Any discussion? Roll call.
On the minutes, Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatiga?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Yes.
Reports of county officials, report from the county executives designee. Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. I'm here to speak expeditiously on the Up for the Jobs Initiative. The county executive on last Thursday came down to the Finance Committee meeting and shared the initiative, the project, and what was transpiring, what that particular project. And I just want to hit him some of the high points, and of course, if there's any type of questions, I'll be more than happy to address them. About a year ago, the United Electrical Local 506 Workers, their leadership team came in and met with the county executive and myself, and they shared with us their vision as far as marketing the workforce, and not only just for their membership, but for the whole region. We thought it was a great ideal. We pulled together some other entities via the Erie Chamber, we pulled together the Governor's Office, we also pulled together Department of Labor and Industry, United Way, and of course, we were there. And through these collaborative meetings, we came up with this initiative called Up for the Job. And what is Up for the Job? Well, Up for the Job is an attempt to attract new businesses and new investments in Erie County to market its highly skilled workforce, and to let other industries know that we're ready to do work, and we're ready to do work now. And going through that process, we had three proposals, cemented their particular proposal. We reviewed their proposals, and the proposal was based on up to one year. And we used six months as a baseline for just establishing where we thought we could go with the initial, to get the project started. In selecting the proposal for the project, it was shared with us that to do this correctly, it would take about 12 months. So this is how we came up with the 12 months and the budget of $102,000 based on the additional work. And I guess, just to clarify, the first six months by the successful proposal was $36,000. That would be base one. But looking at it in totality, for the whole 12 months, again, came up to $102,000. We were asking county for $50,000. We were going to leverage that money, hopefully to get the Erie Community Foundation involved, as well as Erie County Gaming Revenue Authority involved. In closing, this is a very, very important initiative for the county, especially at this time, because we know what the unemployment rate is, we know that we have to do things right now in order to combat that and bring it down. So this is why I'm here on behalf of not only the administration, but the entities that I asked, that I mentioned a little earlier, to, for council to consider proceeding with this particular initiative. Thank you, council.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Finance Committee, Dr. Faust?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last Thursday, council met as, excuse me, as the Finance Committee and agreed to put the following ordinances on tonight's agenda, ordinances number 90, 91, and 92. We had discussions as to moving some or all of those ordinances to second reading, so we'll determine that in a little bit when we get to the agenda. Also to put on the agenda, possible adoption of resolution number 36, and the sale of parcels from the repository. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Faust. Do we have a report from personnel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Personnel had no issues for the agenda at this particular time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leon. Reports of other members of council, Mr. DiMatteo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just real briefly, last Thursday, Wednesday and Thursday, I was out of town. I was at the University of Pittsburgh's Institute of Politics. It was a hour conference of sorts. This year, it was an elected officials retreat. This year, it focused on the changing work landscape, not only within Western Pennsylvania, but nationally and globally. There were some great ideas, and at a future date, I will have a report prepared to present as to some of those ideas that were discussed that are applicable to our area. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmen. Councilwoman Fatiga?
Yes. To talk a little more about the subjects that Mr. Giles brought up, I, too, had the opportunity, as a healthcare professional, to attend the Suicide Prevention Seminar, and I echo the sentiments and thank Dene Breder for her involvement, which involved not only the great speaker, but she was instrumental as part of the committee of getting the speakers and organizing a conference for 500 people. So it's an important, very important topic, and I just wanted to acknowledge her as well. And with regards to the Almshaus Ceremony, that's the first time that I ever attended. It was moving, it was beautiful, and I will never, ever miss it again. So if anyone has the opportunity to attend that service on the September 11th, that'll be held every two years, I would encourage you to do so. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Moving on, we don't have any old business, so we'll move on to new business. And I'll entertain a motion to, Dr. Faust.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve, or I'm sorry, to amend tonight's agenda to make second readings of ordinances number 91 and 92.
Moved by Dr. Faust.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Leon. Any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Smith.
On the motion, Mrs. Fatiga?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Yes.
Just for those in the audience and those at home, any item that's considered a first reading does not, is not considered for a vote. Those that are a second reading are. Depending on the circumstance, sometimes council will choose to move an item straight from a first to a second so that it is available for a vote. So that'll move us on to item A, which is a first reading of ordinance number 90, entitled only, please.
A first reading of ordinance number 90, 2017, 34th, 2017 General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $102,000, and creation of Up for the Job Initiative line items.
Mr. Chairman.
Dr. Faust?
Just quickly, just for Gary's benefit, because he came in, and he wouldn't have known this necessarily. I think we're still committed to the project. I think we would just like to keep that a first reading to, to just tighten up the numbers and the initial initiatives, and hopefully it'll also maybe give us more time to get the matching funds in so we can go forward with the full effect anyway. But that, I don't think, it shouldn't be taken as a sign that we are not supporting a program in a particular way, so. And also, I want to commend your son for being patient back there. I have a young boy myself, so I know how difficult that can be. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Faust. Just given the consideration of, if any other member of council, Councilman DiMatteo?
Yeah, I guess, Mr. Lee, and as a point of fact, part of my, or a lot of my reservations are, I see that the person who will win this bid came in at $36,000. I know we're asking for 102. I need to know where that other $66,000 is going to, I mean, in some detail. And if it was for, going to be for one year, why was an RFP listed for just six months? I think part of the other issue as well, too, is, you know, the whole, the whole Up for the Job Initiative, I mean, it seems to me that there really isn't a plan in front of us for what that is. I mean, we can say that, you know, it was born a year ago, you know, when the union approached you, but I mean, I would really like to see what this plan is. Otherwise, we really become just funding an idea. And quite frankly, I have an issue with funding ideas. I mean, if there's a definite plan there, you know, it might make it palatable at that point. We funded a lot of other ideas in the past, and some of those really haven't worked out very well, for what that's worth, so.
And Councilman, if you would like a, Gary, I'd...
Oh, yeah, I mean, yeah, you can answer that, or, I mean, if we have that prepared for our next finance meeting, whatever's, whatever's most, you know, comfortable for you.
Yeah, something short you'd like to add?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, yeah, just briefly. Councilman DiMatteo, I believe you received a copy of all three requests for proposals, so you can see in there exactly what the goals are with this particular, at least from the prospective proposals that you have there, what the goals were and what they want to accomplish. In the RFP, on page 11, we said provide a month-to-month basis pricing up to one year. So as I mentioned before, the baseline was six months every use, but it could go up to one year. So that's, so what we will provide, and, you know, we do not have a problem with this at all, we can provide the budget showing, again, from one to six months, and then from seven to 12 months, so that you'll have a clear breakdown of the additional funds of the $66,000 that you mentioned.
Well, I know what your RFP says, but I mean, I want to see what the county executive's proposal is up for the job, not what you want these groups to do for you. I want to know what this, what, it's like a business, what's your business plan from the beginning and what the end game is. Now, if it truly, if it is for one year, all three of the RFPs came back with only a monthly cost for six months. I mean, I don't see, I don't see one year based on any of these. Everyone is broken down for six months. I mean, and we can, and I don't want to belabor the meeting, we can discuss this, and like I said, for the next meeting, that's fine. I mean, I wasn't looking for a definite answer right this minute, so.
Sure. But, and, just kind of, Mr. Chairman...
Yeah, I'll allow this one last, and if any other, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Sure. The, you will not be receiving a business plan, the proposal, the awarding proposal, that is the business plan, Mr. DiMatteo, so that is what we plan to execute. As far as the updated budget, we will provide that information. Thank you.
Councilman Horton?
Yeah, to that point, I believe that it spells out scope of services in that RFP, which is how the plan should be executed.
Okay. Second reading of ordinance number 91, entitled only.
Second reading of ordinance number 91, 2017, 2017 Public Health Fund Budget, revised expenditures of $69,341, new line item for merging Injury Prevention Bureau with Safe and Healthy Bureau. So move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Leon, seconded by Mr. Horton. Any discussion? Roll call.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatiga?
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance number 92, entitled only.
The second reading of ordinance number 92, 2017, 2017 Health Choices Fund Budget, revised expenditures of $7,799,963, and creation of expense line for MCO assessment. So move.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Faust, and seconded by Mr. Leon. Any discussion? Roll call.
On ordinance 92, Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatiga?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Yes. Possible adoption of resolution number 36, entitled only.
Resolution number 36, 2017, designation of grant agent for Erie County District Attorney's Office.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Faust and seconded by Mr. Leone. Any discussion? Roll call.
On resolution 36, Mrs. Lowell?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Dr. Faust.
Move to approve the sale of parcels from repository according to the index numbers listed in our agenda tonight.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Faust and seconded by Mr. Leone. Any discussion? Roll call.
On the sale of parcels, Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes. Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowell?
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Yes. Before we adjourn, I, just something I prefer as a, as a citizen, but also as an elected official, I know that some people read doubt as a reason to cast aspersion towards a certain project or issues that come before us, whether it's regarding the HRC or anything else that comes before us in a form of a ordinance or allocation of funding or program support. I just would like for the public just to bear with that, you know, a little bit of doubt is not something that should be used to destroy or to be seen as something to negate a project. How we operate, and I think how best, how any community best operates is through discussion. If there's any concerns that arises, express those concerns, find solutions, and then we can move on from there. But with that, I will...
Mr. Chairman, just to echo that, I just happened to read an article talking about in organizations that in many ways, the dissenter is the most valuable person of the organization because they help clarify the mind of those who ultimately decide on something, because it lets them focus their attention on the good and the bad of something more than just groupthink and everybody agreeing along, so.
Thanks for doing me one better.
Yeah. We moved to adjourn.
Stand adjourned.